As a preliminary matter, this is Howard Traister, Chair of the Newbury Zoning Board of Appeals. Permit me to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. Board members, when I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Elaine Baker?
Yes.
Eric Spahn?
Yes.
Larry Murphy Planning Board?
Yes.
Mario Carnavelli?
Yes.
John DiMartino? When I call your name, please respond in the affirmative. Susan Neuss?
Yes, connecting, reconnecting.
Yeah, okay. We have no speakers on the agenda. Okay, good evening. Today is June 18th, no, what's today's date, July 17?
16.
16, okay. Today is July 16, 2020. This is an open meeting of the Newbury Zoning Board of Appeals. It is being conducted remotely, consistent with Governor Baker's executive order of March 12, 2020, due to the current state of emergency in the Commonwealth due to the outbreak of COVID-19 virus. In order to mitigate the transmission of COVID-19 virus, we have been advised and directed by the Commonwealth to suspend public gatherings, and as such, the Governor's order suspends the requirement of the open meeting law, where all meetings in a publicly accessible physical location. Further, all members of public parties are allowed and encouraged to participate remotely. The order, which you can find posted with the Agenda materials for the meeting, allows public parties to meet entirely remotely so long as reasonable public access is afforded so that the public can follow along with the deliberations of the meeting. Ensuring public access does not ensure public participation unless such participation is required by law. This meeting will feature public comment. For this meeting, the Newbury Zoning Board of Appeals is convened by video conference via Zoom, as posted on the CBA's Agenda, which can be found on the Zoning Board of Appeals page on the town's website. The Agenda identifies how the public may join the meeting. This Agenda can also be accessed from the website's homepage by clicking on the box that says "Agendas" at the top of the news box. Please note that this meeting is being recorded and that most attendees are participating by video conference or by telephone. We were provided, meeting materials were provided to the board members prior to the meeting for review. We are now turning to the first item on the Agenda. Before we do so, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and to ensure accurate meeting minutes. For any discussion items, I, the Chair, will go down the line of members, inviting each by name to provide comment, questions, or motions. Please hold until your name is called. Further, everyone other than board members, please remember to mute your phone or computer when you are not speaking. Please use earbuds, earphones with tablets or cell phones. Please remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate minutes. We are aware that other participants can see you if you are participating by video. To see you, take care not to screen share your computer or introduce other distractions unless requested to do so by me. Anything you broadcast may be captured by the recording. For any response, please wait until the Chair yields the floor to you and state your name before speaking. Board members will be called upon in first-name alphabetical order to ease the process. If board members wish to engage in colloquy, the other member, with other members, please do so through the Chair, taking care to identify yourselves. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Eric, can you read the Agenda?
Yes. All right, public hearings, first public hearing, Ron Boland, 354th Street. Continued hearing. The applicant is requesting a finding for relief from Section 97-4D of the Newbury zoning bylaw. As proposed, as the proposed, construction will increase the height, floor ratio, FAR, and lot coverage of the structure located within the Plum Island overlay district, PIOD, for the property located on Assessors Map U04-0-61.
Okay, so... Are they here?
They are.
Okay, so would you like to tell us what you've come back with?
Sure. There had been several pieces of information you were seeking clarification for last time we were here in June. So I collected the information and I submitted it. So hopefully you have the documents. What specifically you had been looking for at that time was information specific to the distance with the addition that we're adding, we're proposing for, the distance with, from the addition to the property lines, in order to get a clear sense of how the addition will be relative to the setbacks for the property. In addition to that, you had requested information with regards to a detailed elevation of the addition, and then also had requested information about the nature of the space above the living space, which was questioned as to whether it would be considered an attic or a loft. And so those were the pieces of information that I collected. And I think that was it. I had also had a discussion with the building inspector about the questions and, you know, I realize he's not here, but I did get his inputs with regards to some of the questions that have come up.
Okay, Eric, did you get a chance to review what was submitted?
We received, and I think we all received, there's one was a section drawing of the building by GSJG engineers, which shows the height above grade on pilings and respect to how the, I guess, the attic loft is built. We received an application for the FAR form and the application page 2A, which has the existing lot, proposed lot and zoning ordinance requirements for the lot listing, so that we got three pieces of three revised documents.
Right, they'll all address what we asked for.
The other two pieces, I think I had submitted the week before. And so they were, do you want me to share my screen and I can show you what they look like?
Why don't you do that?
Oh, there it is, here it is. So the first, let me shrink this down a bit. Yep, so the first document that was created by our architect, can you, I don't know if you can see it well enough here, but I had sent that two weeks ago. And on it, the existing structure is here, I don't know if you can see my mouse, but it's here. There is a hallway that will be created to attach to the addition, which is here. And so the setbacks had to do with the distance from the addition to the rear of our property, which is listed as 14 and a half feet, 14 feet, excuse me. And then from the most western side of the addition to the western property line, which is 11 and a half feet. And then from the front of the addition to the front of the property, which is 41 and a half feet. So that was one document. Did you receive that?
Yeah.
Yep, you have that, okay. And then the other piece not mentioned is there's an elevation drawing, which also depicts the attic space, which is, I think actually technically would be considered loft space. And for that, I had talked with the building inspector to get clarification with regards to how to categorize this space. And he indicated that any area that was with less than a seven foot, I should say, any area that had a seven foot or greater ceiling height would be considered, included into the floor area calculation. So that then resulted in the drawing the architect made with regards to the area that would be above seven feet, which effectively is five foot wide by, I calculated it 11 feet, but technically it's 10, but then I aired on the side of a little bit more for an additional 55 square feet, which I then included into the modified floor area. I'm sorry, there was one other piece you had asked for, plans of our existing house. And so I sent those as well two weeks ago, and they, they look like this. I'm hopeful that you have those as well.
I'm working, I'm working on that one.
Can I ask a few questions or?
Go ahead, Eric.
Okay, so, you know, it asked for a site plan with setbacks, and Ron, you did provide a plan with setbacks, but it's not, you know, all good effort by your architect, but it's not really a site plan that shows us what the true distances and configuration and a scaled drawing that represents it. These, you know, if this was the past, these would all be on your deed. And we really would, you know, everyone else is making a surveyed site plan by a surveyed engineer so that we can see the true means and bounds of the site and location of the dwelling. So I have a concern with the site plan. Two, you showed us the existing floor plan, there appears to be two bedrooms in that?
Correct.
Okay, so you're going from two bedrooms to supposedly three bedrooms. Was the question what we were after. You've talked about the attic space, but I think I have a bigger concern, Ron, with this whole setup and layout of this, that I'm not buying the fact that this isn't a detached accessory apartment to an existing structure. If you have a front door on your house and you're not changing that front door and you're adding a breezeway to a one-bedroom suite, there's nothing that prevents you from renting that out or, you know, and if you were to sell the house, the next person, considering that that is a rentable unit, there's, there's nothing that separates, I mean, there's nothing that joins the two together. I know you said you had difficulty making the addition, but there are no accessory apartments allowed on Plum Island.
Wouldn't it require having a space for food preparation to be considered a?
Yeah, I mean, but in terms of the layout and what you're providing and how you're providing access to it and with the restroom, it's not...
There's kitchen facilities, there's no stove, there's no refrigerator, there's no oven, there's no dishwasher, there's, there's no kitchen.
And the placement of that structure was really to give it easy proximity to the kitchen in our existing house. To put it anywhere else on the property would mean that we would have to cross through the main living space in order to get into the kitchen to be able to use it. And this plan really created the most accessible addition of a bedroom, you know, bedroom, bathroom.
I hear what you're saying, but a simple counter backed up to the sink in the lab there creates a condition. Just saying, it just, it's just from all the accessory apartments we've seen, it looks exactly like one. I know it may not be your intent, but in having a house and separating a separate room or wing, that's, it's just very different. That's how I see it.
I don't know how to address that.
Let me just see what other comments we might have. Elaine, do you have any comments on that?
No, I'm still trying to figure this out. Not right now, I don't.
Okay. And Mario, do you have any thoughts or comments?
Is the breezeway necessary?
Is the breezeway necessary? It's, it's what connects the addition. It was, yeah, I mean, I don't think we would have been able to just attach the addition to the existing space that is a kitchen effectively.
With just a doorway?
You mean, right, so not having the breezeway would have made it?
And just a doorway, yeah, to the addition bathroom.
I'm not sure I understand.
Instead of the breezeway, just a doorway from the existing hall?
Yeah, it's a kitchen, so it would be pressing the addition up against our existing kitchen, which I think would have been a very undesirable alternative.
That isn't what the plan said.
Ron, can you point us to the existing condition plan where we can see the kitchen and the layout?
Meaning the plans that were, hold on one second.
Okay, so.
Existing conditions, meaning the existing house now, correct?
I got it now, there's, we're working with two separate PDF files here to view on screen. Yeah, if you would show the page five of that updated email, there you go.
Right there, yep.
Yep, so you come in the plan, you approach from the left, you come up the stairs, you arrive on a covered porch, you have a covered porch which has two doors into it, and you open and you walk into the kitchen.
Correct.
Yep.
John, do you have any comments or thoughts on this, questions?
May I just also raise a point relative to what Mr. Savan had asked about the nature of the plans? We actually went back to the engineering firm that had done the existing conditions survey for us, which had been a $2,000 survey, where they had had, I think, at least one or two people out here for several hours doing measurement. And I had asked them what it would cost to be able to take the planned addition and superimpose it on the existing condition survey, and then mark the distance to the property lines. And Millennium explained to me it would be a $1,500 procedure. And I spoke with my architect about it, and he said it was about two hours of drafting work to be able to make that superimposition. And he thought that that was an extraordinary amount of money to charge for doing that. So I went to a separate engineering company and asked them if they would be able to take the existing plans and do the superimposition. And they said they legally are not allowed to do that because the plans have been done by another engineer. So then I went back to Millennium again and explained my concerns about what felt to me an exorbitant cost and the fact that I felt like I was obligated by your requirement to use him, and he was charging me what felt to me a very excessive amount of money for this project. And he explained that the price is what the price is. And I felt frustrated by that. So I'm here today not knowing what you will require. If you require that I do that to go back to the engineer, then I will. And I will pay him $1,500 to spend two hours superimposing the plans onto the existing survey. But I guess my question is that when I spoke with Doug Packer with regards to the issues related to the conservation requirements, that for instance, the structure be a minimum of 24-inch clearance from the ground, what he explained to me is that if the structure is not 24-inch clearance from the ground when they come to inspect the structure, it will not receive a certificate of occupancy. And if you have expectation of what I will be doing with regards to this structure, and I don't meet those expectations, and they do not, they're not represented by what I've presented to you here today, would you not have the same recourse?
Yeah, but, yeah, I understand that, and it is a lot of money, but you get what you pay for. And again, this is a legal document, and if there was a decision to be made, we're not vouching for the information you're providing, and that's what you're paying the engineer for with their professional liability insurance. And so if, if it is built and it's off, what are you going to go back to the contractor and tell him he built it wrong? And he'll say, you know, I worked off this paper copy with these couple of dimensions on it, and I didn't know that that line wasn't straight, and so I took the dimension here, not there. And now your structure is built, and it's all, it's all hung up in mumbo jumbo because, you know, you cut a few corners and it, it wasn't quite there. I mean, it has happened in the past, and things have gotten hung up. And we're, we're trying to, to help, be as helpful as possible. And yes, we probably certainly could look at the plan and understand and have the checks and balances of the building inspector make inspections, but who wants a property that's half-built, that's unoccupied, sitting there for 10 years while it's going through legal issues of figuring out what's, what's, what's happening? Because, you know, the documents weren't, weren't clear, and we're not making representation to that. So, you know, I guess I can say proceed at your own risk, but if I can't understand the site, and you've got this perfect rectangle of a site, and that's truly what you have, how do I know that the 11 foot six is truly 11 foot six off that northeast corner and not 11 foot six off the southeast corner? I just can't, I can't see it on this, this plan, I don't know. So I'm not trying to be difficult, but, you know, there's not the level of documentation that we're used to seeing that we make judgments on here. So that's, that's the point I'm making.
So are you able to, are you able to give us approval contingent upon meeting the setback requirements? Or is that, is that not an opportunity for us?
I'm just saying that, you know, the, the more we relax our rules and the more helpful and overlooking we are, the more issues that arise. And then the next person brings us the same sketch, but on a paper napkin, thinking that it's, it's good enough to pass. And, you know, things happen, I mean, it's, you're...
This, this is the Chair again. So I think to answer your question, if everything with, with the project is approved, we could conditionally approve it with the receipt of a stamped plan. Is that what you're asking?
Yep.
Yeah.
So do you agree with that, Eric?
Yeah, you know, I was saying that, yeah, that is one way to do it, and that is a condition that could be made. And that gets the proper documentation in the right place and the right file and filed with the deed so that when you go to sell the house, you pull it out and there's no questions that are asked. It also helps make sure the construction proceeds in order, and that's in the best interest of everybody in Newbury.
So I think we need to concentrate, probably for the time being, Eric, on your concern of whether it's an accessory apartment, or if we can see that this is the only way they can make the project work. That's the biggest issue, really.
Right, and, and, you know, the qualifications for plugging in a refrigerator in a corner and putting a hot plate on a table and/or a microwave is, is pretty thin. And we've had people that have presented, you know, it's not a bedroom, but I'll just take the door off it and...
I understand, you know, what your concern is. I'm saying that's, that's probably what we should be talking about. Because a site plan isn't going to correct that issue.
Understood.
Right, okay, Elaine, you have any more?
No, I just have a couple of questions. I thought we discussed this the last meeting, that he was supposed to get a complete plan to us, showing everything, not piecemealing different plans. And I understand it's an additional cost to you, Ron, but in order for us to understand exactly what you want to do for the approval and the plan to be recorded and everything else, we need a full... I don't know, I just, I don't like the way the plans look, the way they look now. That's my opinion. You really can't tell what you're trying to do. And I agree with Eric about the, you know, the in-law apartment.
I honestly don't know what to say about that concern. I guess for me, it's, it's a bit frustrating because we are designing this in order to make it livable for us. And that was how we approached it, not knowing that there would even be a hint of concern about this issue of it being rentable. Because in fact, rentability in terms of this island is just a function of how people use their space. Seems like it's a very slippery slope to try and regulate it from a zoning perspective. Because cooking facility here, it is a bedroom and a bathroom.
And quite honestly, we've owned this house for 20 years. We've squished our family of five into a really tiny house for 20 years. We're planning to move here when our daughter graduates from high school, and we're hoping to live here full-time and have the house be a little bit bigger so that we can actually, you know, live here. And we don't intend to rent the house, and we can't. So I, so I'm not sure really how to proceed.
And the problem too is that if we had had guideline from the beginning that there is this issue of adding a bedroom by breezeway that will put you into double dutch with regards to this issue of rentability, then we could have potentially avoided spending thousands of dollars on architect plans, knowing that this would likely be a potential issue. I had no idea that this would likely be an issue because I had extraordinary difficulty just being able to speak with a building inspector here.
Well, it's not the building inspector that needs to guide you. It's your architect that should be reading the zoning bylaws, and you're paying your architect to interpret the zoning bylaws and represent it. Other people, other people come with fully drafted, and we can show you the next Nobleport set of drawings where they've drawn the existing and the new, and every almost nail in the whole place, and they have a lawyer representing them. So I hear you, and I, you know, we want to be helpful, and we appreciate what you're saying about being a resident of Newbury, and we don't take that lightly. But that doesn't mean for some circumstance that you might sell this property next year, and then someone else buys it with the intent of doing what they weren't supposed to do because it's physically there. And the zoning bylaws do not, you know, they are, there is some interpretation and there's leeway, but it's, it's pretty straightforward in terms of what, what the guidelines are.
So could you help me understand that then? Because it sounds like to me the breezeway seems to be a primary issue. So is there an issue in the bylaws with regards to me having a breezeway connecting a bedroom to the rest of my house?
It separates it, and so you have two separate entrances that you could put, you could just add a door, a simple door, and now you have a lockable separate unit that is separate from the existing residents. And yes, you don't show a counter with, but again, you put a table in there and plug in a microwave and plug in a refrigerator, and you have a condition where somebody could live in that, and it's set up to be that way, where you come up the front steps, you're on the breezeway, and the renters go left and you go right, and that's, that's how it looks. I mean, you could move the house, you could move your addition adjacent and and slide it north so that you enter the the one bedroom in the in the corner off the breezeway and cut the breezeway down. And then there there'd be less separation. I mean, that's the problem is that there is separation. That that's the issue here is that you could have renters come and you could have living in your house. And you could have renters in there. And in terms of of meeting or crossing paths, and you could have a lockable door, that's that's what it that's what it looks like.
I'm sorry, this is again confusing for me because I think we were talking about bylaws. And I'm asking you about the question of the length of a breezeway. Is the length of a breezeway in the bylaw that my architect could have anticipated this and helped save me the frustration of running into this issue with you?
There's no, but it's not, there's not a definition of a breezeway or a length of breezeway that limits it. It's the arrangement of the plan and of the of the unit.
I guess I'm I'm struggling with that a little bit.
Larry, you have any insight on this from a planning board by law?
No, it's not, it's not an issue that would typically come before the planning board. I mean, I don't really have any feeling about the merits of the project, one way or the other. The only thing I would just say from experience, and tend to be very leery of conditional approvals. They can present problems to both sides. So I would, you know, just caution against that frankly.
Okay.
And again, it's not, it's not a legal position, it's just from experience.
Right, okay, thank you.
And Larry, was that comment relative to the setback question going back?
No, it's a question of enforcement and practicality. I mean, but before you can do anything with this, you're going to have to file a decision. Okay, and somewhere down the road, you may want to refinance the property or you may want to sell it. An entitled examiner is going to be looking at this and saying, well, how do I know that these conditions were fulfilled? So who's going to, who's going to make that call in the future, you know? And then you also have from the from the ZBA's point of view, I think you have a potential enforcement problem. So it's kind of, it's not a very clean way to do it. And I think, and it could come back to bite you frankly.
And this, I'm sorry, Larry, just to clarify, is this related to having a survey that demonstrates clearly the setbacks for?
No, 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 all is all is I'm talking about is demonstrating that the conditions, that some future date that the conditions have been met. And how are you going to do that? Presumably, it would be the building inspector who's going to look at this and sign off on it. How do you get that on the record? I suppose that maybe there are imaginative ways to do it. But since you have to get to that point anyway, before you can do anything, I wouldn't muddy up your title with a conditional approval. Okay, I'm coming from, in a former life, I did some real estate closings and just entitled examinations. And there may be a way around it. I'm just, just don't back yourself into a corner where you may have problems in the future. I think you want to get the issues resolved upfront. Once again, that's not a legal position. I'm not a voting member of this board. But just from 40 years of practice in municipal law and, you know, municipal government, that'd be very careful about it. It might work for you, but you know, it could also come back to bite you.
Thank you, Larry. So Mr. Voland, just going back to the question about how how the addition was designed, there was no consideration before to do it any other way without that breezeway to separate the two, the two pieces.
It was never a question. It was never a question. There was never a question of concern about having the breezeway in our planning. And frankly, again, I find it, I find it difficult to understand that concern.
You do understand though that we do have bylaws in the town addressing accessory apartments. And I know it's not your intention for you when you work to have an accessory apartment. This looks very similar to what accessory apartments, how accessory apartments are added on to existing houses. So that that's the concern. And I think that's the point that Eric is trying to bring up. And Elaine, I think, I know you you said you liked a full set of plans. But a full set of plans are still going to have this look to it, I believe.
Yeah.
So is it possible that, you know, if you do get another set of plans, that they somehow can relieve this situation from an architectural perspective?
They're not architects, they're engineers.
Engineer, well, from an engineering perspective?
I'm not sure I understand the question.
You know, can they do something to alleviate the situation with the breezeway?
Again, you'd be asking me to connect to an existing kitchen. I would, and literally, I have a sink and a dishwasher that would then be separating to an adjacent wall that would then have my proposed living space.
Our windows open out.
Into it would be into a room. It would be an absurd plan. So I guess my point is, is that since I hadn't anticipated this would be an issue, and I'm not clear at all as to how I could have anticipated that this would have been an issue. And that's my frustration with it. And now I'm feeling like I don't know what my solution is, short of you asking me to thoroughly revise my plans, which I'm not sure really is reasonable.
Well, and at our kitchen, I mean, we have our existing kitchen.
I mean, it's a design issue and and I
Right, so you can hire an architect to design your design issue. I mean, it's it's not our responsibility to accept a design issue. I mean, there are challenges, there are houses, there are people that do total teardowns and total rebuilds. There are people that are forced to put on less than they'd like before budget and or setbacks. I mean, you could take your whole new one addition and move it and connect it right where it's at, right where your existing hallway is, and have the connection come into the lower left-hand corner of this room of the new space, putting the new space up, and you would not affect any kitchen windows. And the only attachment would be between the right where you have the red line that says hall. Not that says, but right where it says new hall, hall existing or something.
I I don't agree with that assessment. I don't, I don't agree with your recommendation for plan.
Okay, then.
I don't understand it. I don't believe that there is anything written in the bylaws that restricts our plan as it's designed. And so now I'm getting frustrated because I feel like you're asking me now to do the next step, which is to hire an attorney, which I had certainly sought to avoid. Because I thought I could come before you and present a plan that met every single requirement written with regards to issues related to height and setback and surface area. And you're pulling something out that I don't believe is going to be in bylaws.
I mean, we're not asking for a
And then now you need to hire an attorney to be able to represent me here because because what? To me, that's absurd. As my wife and I have said, we have been taxpaying residents here in Newbury for 20 years. We ask virtually nothing of this town, virtually nothing.
And we haven't asked for a single solitary variant from what we're allowed. And we have houses, massive, a massive house across the street, a massive house next door to us. We're not, we're not asking to do anything that's not within the rules. We've, we're not asking for any additional square footage. We're not asking for, I mean, we're, we've literally read the rules and and worked from that as our starting point.
Yeah, and you're presenting it that way. And I'm just saying that I have I have issue in discussing the issue that it it looks like an accessory apartment. And there are people that build, and I'm saying it's you, but, you know, they build everything but the one little piece. And then it becomes what it wasn't supposed to be.
It's not an accessory apartment. It's a bedroom and a bathroom in a sitting area so that we have a little bit more space for our family. We have literally been here with our in a teeny tiny 840 square foot house for 20 years. And before that, we lived in Newburyport. And I just, it's not an apartment, there's no kitchen.
Yeah, it's not drawn on the plans, but that doesn't mean that it couldn't be added simply during construction. And I'm just saying that the layout
The building inspector will come in and will see that there is no kitchen.
I think we totally understand your situation as you living there. I think the situation, the way the issue is, if you happen to move and someone else moves, it comes into that apartment or comes into the house and turns it into an apartment because it can be turned into an apartment. I think that is the issue.
Yeah, and and we have had recently people present stuff to us to come back. And they've had unlawful secondary apartments where they knowingly made just a few changes. And that that's what, that's the, that's what this is reminding me of. And this is what this looks like. I can, I can understand your your frustration and your wanting to do this economically. But that, I mean, that's not an issue for for us to consider in terms of providing us these hand-drawn drawings and, you know, not getting the second step on the site plan where, you know, other people readily do it every single project. So I hear where you're coming from, but it's the information you're providing is hard to assess here.
Okay, we're going to improve the assessment issue.
Yes, we will go back.
Millenium Engineering tomorrow, as he is fully expecting me to do because he advised me that this would be your opinion. And I will ask him to give you the single plan that you're looking for that will define each of the different parameters relative to the proposed structure. The problem we have here is that that does not seem like it will be a satisfying solution for you. It seems to me like you are asking me to meet a standard of what it smells or looks like you, but it's not defined by anything written in law. And that to me is a frustration. This is an interpretation. And then the question is, how many other people on this island could take their house or structure or with a breezeway or not and turn it into an apartment? That's a law enforcement issue. It's not a zoning issue, it's a law enforcement issue.
Right, and then they see, yeah.
Okay, so Eric, what
Howie, what do you want to do?
Could you offer us a recommendation, please?
Well,
I guess we ask town council when we typically get in a in a bind. I don't know how our new, how, you know, it's not an excuse, but how the building inspector, our new building inspector in terms of the accessory apartment.
I raised that issue with him. He was unfamiliar with that concern. Because I told him that you had a concern about that.
Yep.
So Mr. Voland, would you like us to talk to the town council and see if
I think what I need at this point is, I think I need to hire an attorney to come argue my point of view more effectively than I clearly have done. And I think that's the next step is I need to hire an attorney. And then whether that attorney presents to the town council or to you, I don't know. I just now realized that this is not, there's no solution in sight that I see to this other than you asking me to thoroughly revise my plans, which I am not content to do.
And
Would you like to continue? Or would probably be the best thing if you want to look into some other alternative, whether it's a lawyer or whatever. If we do vote and we don't vote in favor of you, then you can't come back to us. So, yes.
Going to be voting in favor of us, I believe, on account of the plan they are drawn. If I understand you correctly, you are not, you would not be voting in favor of our plan.
I can't speak for the other members. I'm just saying you may interpret from the questions that we have that we might not vote favorably. So I would suggest that you ask for a continuance. We can talk to the town council and see if we are thinking, the way we're thinking is correct or legal. You can ask an attorney on your part to give you advice. We'll both get advice and you can come back to us again.
And Howie, I would say the issue is 97-10D number two. And whether this could be considered detached or within. And there is a difference between what the building inspector can approve and what the ZBA can approve. And then the question of in terms of what is presented and the leeway of understanding of what it what it might be per per its layout. You know, we we have that. I also think that the condition of the the space, which I'm not going to argue, but typically it's seven feet for an occupiable room. But they count the square footage within with a five foot or greater eve. I just have that note here, so I'll say it. But I don't, I don't think that's an issue to discuss. So I think really, the only thing is this is accessory apartment is is the only issue remaining in question. You know, if we approve a site plan, we can either approve it per drawn or prove it with the condition that an engineered stamped site plan is is presented. I think we can discuss and get around that one. But I do think the accessory apartment is an issue, Howie, that we just need to clarify.
So that's, that's why I'm suggesting to them that the best avenue for them might be to continue.
Yes.
Yes, please. And so is that the only outstanding issue is the issue of the accessory apartment? And 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 do we need to go back and have Millennium Engineering draw?
I would, I would say, my feeling is that I would not spend the money on the site plan until the issue of the accessory apartment is, you know, it's not that we want you to spend money
I understand.
unnecessarily. So I, I think that if the accessory apartment question can be satisfied, that the site plan and everything else will fall into place.
Okay, is that the only issue then that is outstanding with respect to, at this point, approval?
Elaine?
I'm okay with, I want to talk to Eric, well, Eric about the measurements and stuff like that because that's his forte.
Right. Is that something, something that may hold up approval in your mind? Or just is it just correcting paperwork?
What, what do you mean?
So what they are asking is, is the accessory apartment the only real issue that we have?
In my opinion, yeah, as long as the plans fall within, you know, what Eric says, yes.
Yes, okay, so I, Mr. and Mrs. Voland, I think that answers your question. That the accessory apartment issue is the stumbling block here. And we will confer with the town council on our end. And you confer with whoever you need to. And I think a continuance will be in your best interest.
Thank you.
Okay, so so do we need to make a motion to continue?
We do, but I think we just need to settle on or confirm the next meeting day. Just based on the fact we're talking August, I don't know what people's vacations are, if anything. So I just wanted to hold that for conversation this evening before I solidified it.
Okay, so do you want to do that?
Normally, our date would be Thursday, August 20th. Does anybody have any conflicts with that date?
I do.
Do you want to go a week earlier?
You good with that, Elaine and Mario?
I'm good with that, the 13th. Yeah.
Okay. Is that fine with you, Mr. and Mrs. Voland? Is that fine with you, Mr. and Mrs. Voland?
Yes.
Okay, so can we have a motion to continue the, this hearing until August thirteenth?
I'll make a motion to continue the hearing till August thirteenth.
Okay, second?
Second.
Okay, roll call, Elaine?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
Favor, so the motion passes. All right. So we will see you next month. And Mr. and Mrs. Voland, still with us?
Yes.
Yes.
So keep in touch with Sue.
Hi.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Bye.
Bye off.
Yeah.
All right, next one?
I don't know if you want to read it, Eric, but I can say that the noble, noble, I forget what it is.
I'll read it.
Okay.
Public hearings, number two, Nobleport Construction, care of Mark Griffin, twenty, twentieth street. The applicant is requesting a finding for relief from section ninety-seven dash four D of the Newbury zoning bylaws as the proposed construction to raise and reconstruct a three-bedroom, single-family home will increase the height of the structure located on the Plum Island overlay district, B I O D. For the property located at accessories map U zero-three dash zero dash one-two-eight.
Okay, so I did receive an email from their representative, Mark Griffin, who said that the Daily News did not run their second legal ad, even though it was submitted as, it was submitted appropriately. That's never happened to them before. However, as such, it is not a legal hearing. So he said that he's going to have to re-advertise, so I am going to give him my next meeting date so he can do the appropriate re-advertising and re-notification to the abutters.
So we don't need to continue because?
Don't need to continue, don't even need to open it, correct.
Okay.
Okay.
And so, does anybody have any other business, anything new that they want to discuss?
Well, I would say that Sue, you have this on face value of the drafting and the drawings that were provided. The Nobleport, which is not being heard, certainly is an example of what I would call helpful drawings to be submitted, or almost drawings that we should be requiring. They have a drafted stamped site plan, they have drafted existing conditions, they have drafted existing building. I mean, these all can be printed on eleven by seventeen or eight and a half by eleven, you can read the dimensions, you can read the room names. The height is clearly dimensioned, and the site plan has everything on it. So if anybody's ever in question, I might just print this eleven by seventeen and keep it in the office and just say, if you could submit this, it would certainly help your cause. And we may not be able to legally hold someone to it, but you know, the level and quality of information you submit. I know, Howie, but it keeps, it keeps coming up, and it makes it difficult and confusing.
You know, if they see that, maybe they'll understand what they need to do.
And that's, that's all I'm saying, is if, and the building inspector probably should get a copy and say, you know, if you're thinking that you need to go before the ZBA, a complete application with drawings would certainly help you.
Hey Eric, is it possible to get a copy of what you referenced earlier today?
Or?
Yeah, that ninety-seven point two.
Oh yeah, yeah, I will cut and paste it. I'll send it to Sue, Sue can send it out to everybody, but it's very clear, and typically when these come up, I usually cut and paste it onto a Word document and use it as a checklist, line by line, to make sure that we've covered all the bases. And this is, I mean, it has happened in the past with people putting third floors and people putting studies next to bedrooms with adjacent bathrooms, which only need a Home Depot door or heck, a curtain, and they become a second or bedroom, and they double the bedroom count. So I appreciate what they're saying and how they're, they're saying it, and I feel for them, but you know, we continuously get.
You know, one thing I wanted to say, it was interesting though, because he said he didn't realize that this would come up. And then in another sentence, he said, you know, last night, someone said that this may be an issue.
But we talked about this the last meeting.
And so it's like he never even knew that this was an issue, but it sounded, then he went back and said, I thought you would bring this up tonight.
Well, and, and the other issue is, you know, I have to say that I got little effort when somebody says that they got an engineer to draw their drawings, they didn't hire an architect, and they're trying to save money. You know, and that they've gone through every design option, but they haven't hired an architect. I don't know what to say.
Yeah.
So, is there any chance you can, or I should ask you, Mario, so you don't have a copy of our bylaws?
I don't, I have a copy of, I have something here, I printed down, the wetlands, chapter ninety-five, and I have a copy of what was it, town comprehensive permit rules and regulations.
So it is, it is on the website.
Yeah, Sue. Yeah, Sue, you with us?
Yeah.
So it would probably be a good idea if they, Mario and John get a full copy of our zoning bylaws.
Yeah, it probably would have been a good idea that they got it when they were sworn in from the town clerk, but.
I'm not, you know, I'm not.
No, I'm just saying, yeah. So I will, I will have to ask her for a full current copy. And I will get it mailed out to them.
Thank you.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
Okay, so I would like to bring up that I, I would like to make a motion that we continue the Village at Cricket Lane meeting until August. And that's, I don't know if I need to make the motion myself, Sue, or I have to ask somebody to make the motion.
Well, under the legislation, Howie, you are the ultimate deciding party. Right, you don't need to make a motion, so I think.
We do continue the hearing until a date in August.
Okay. So I guess knowing that our next regularly scheduled hearings for ZBA are the thirteenth. And we know the twenty, well, actually Elaine doesn't matter for the Village at Cricket.
Thanks, so.
So I guess it's really just a matter of determining if the rest of the board is available on the twentieth.
Eric, is he available?
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
And that was a yes from you, Mario?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, great.
Okay.
And maybe by that time, we can meet in a different form.
Maybe.
Certainly would simplify the process, even though I know we all want to get started on this.
Right.
Right, so if there's nothing else, then we have a motion to close the meeting.
The only other question I have is, could we vote on the meeting minutes for March, April, and May?
Oh, that's right too, yes we can. We have a motion to approve the minutes of the meetings that Sue just talked about.
Motion to approve the minutes of the meetings of?
April?
March, April, and May.
March nineteenth, April sixteenth, May fourteenth.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? We, we need to do this by a roll call. Elaine?
Yes.
Okay, Eric?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So the motion to approve the minutes has passed.
Right, thank you.
So then we need a motion to close the meeting.
Howie, before you do that, can I raise one?
Oh, sure.
Really not in my wheelhouse, I guess, but as far as Cricket Lane goes, did, you on a prior occasion establish, was it July thirtieth as the date for the year? And I don't know the answer to this, but you might want to just double check with town council to see whether or not you should actually convene a meeting on the thirtieth to continue it.
I will, I will do that, Larry, but prior meetings, we have done continuances on a prior date, so.
All right, then fine.
Yeah, so I think it's just a matter of confirming that with Lisa and getting the documentation over to the applicant.
Yeah, well, it's such a sensitive matter, you know.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you for bringing it up though, Larry. Okay, can we have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Motion to adjourn the meeting?
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, again, roll call, Elaine?
Yes.
Eric?
Yes.
And I vote in favor. Motion passes.